I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting Tuesday, March 11th, 2014 of the Placer County Board of Supervisors to order. Our first item for the day is a flag salute led by Supervisor Jennifer Montgomery.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Supervisor. We'll now move to our Statement of Meeting Procedures read by our Clerk.
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of Tuesday, March 11th, 2014. Agendas are available on the wall outside this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker. The Board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker, which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there is a person speaking on behalf of a group with no testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the Board. Keep in mind that the Chairman has discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. It is requested that all cellphones be turned off or put in the silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Great, thank you very much. Now is the time for public comment. Persons of the public may address the Board of Supervisors on items that are not agendized on today's agenda. So if there's anyone from the public that would like to make a comment or speak on a particular topic, please step forward and state your name and let us know what your business is.
Hello, my name is Charlotte Lille and I'm here with IHSS Public, I mean with UDW. My name is Charlotte and I have been an IHSS caregiver for the last 12 years. It is a job that I feel privileged to do because it enables me to help neighbors to live better, more dignified, live in their own homes. Currently, I care for one client Buffy who has spinal stenosis edema. Oh, excuse me. She can hardly get around by herself and the only time that she goes out is for church or when I take her out for errands. I am only getting paid for 40 hours per month working with her. I had another client Ronnie who passed, who passed last month from complication related to AIDS. He was 44-years-old. I used to help him shower, prepare his meals, and helped him with his medical tasks, like changing his colostomy bag. I was getting paid for about $100 hours a month when I was working for Ronnie. Losing Ronnie was hard for me in more ways than one. I had only been working with him for a few months, but in that time period, we became very close. I held his hand when he died. His passing also highlights the financial instability of being a caregiver. As it is with both clients, I was barely making enough to make ends meet, which means that I was not able to save. Now that Ronnie has passed away, I am not able to support myself on the hours that I am paid for working with Buffy. Unless I find another client soon, I will not have enough money to pay my rent, which will cause me to be homeless. Caregivers are the backbone of our community. We do a job that is so important to Placer County and the people who live here, who need care, but we're being paid poverty wages. I'm asking you to please put people first by giving us this raise that we not only deserve, but which many of us need to survive. I know you are looking for a pay increase, please consider us for any increase as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sharon Duchessy. I am a home care provider in Rockland in Mr. Holmes District. Hello, Mr. Holmes. Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate your time. I'm also, like I said, a caregiver. I'm gonna give you a little background on my story. I was a senior loan processor over five cities in Northern California. I was making anywhere from $3,000 to $7,000 a month depending on our loan, how big our loan quota was. I quit being a senior loan processor to take care of my significant other who had a back injury. He had injured his back five years previously, but because he is one of those things, he injured his back, he couldn't move around, he wasn't active, he gained weight, he got diabetes, he got gout, it's just one of those circle of life things when you can't move around, kinda standard for a lot of people who get injured and get disabilities. A lot of the reason why I quit was because he lost the coherency and was sleeping more than he should've and he needed someone to supervise him in order to wake him up, okay, you need to eat breakfast, now it's time to take your pills, you need to wake up, you need to take your lunch pills, you need to get around, you need to move around, we have a doctor's appointment over here, we have therapy here. I quit so I could help him maintain that to prevent him from going to the emergency room four to six times a month, which I had to do when I got off work after my 12 hours. So it was a choice between, am I gonna get six hours of sleep tonight, or I'm gonna get an hour and a half in the emergency room tonight before I have to go to work again? So that was the big reason why I quit. The money difference, I make $10 an hour now versus $3,000 to $7,000 a month, which I really enjoyed making the money and it's really fun being able to go out and talk to other people and being a caregiver, we have a tendency to become isolated. I have additionally added two more clients in order to help with my income. I am sure that you are aware that the IHSS workers have not had a raise since 2009, that's seven years. In those seven years, the cost of living has gone up, the living wage, but our living wage has not. In those seven years, we've been waiting for a living wage. As a caregiver, I give the disabled and elderly the ability to live in dignity and stay in their homes so they can be a vital part of our community. Today, I'm asking you to please give us a livable wage. I'm asking for an increase of 70 cents per hour. 70 cents sounds like a lot, but an increase in our pay as a group will allow us to keep up with the increase in living in Placer County. We try and make ends meet, but it's hard when you make $10 an hour. Gas is $3.56, I just gassed up yesterday, so I'm not going by what the news is saying. Milk is $3.29, also got milk yesterday, so I looked that one up too. In general, groceries have increased over seven years, not to mention rents and mortgages, and also including utilities, which I've heard are going up another couple minutes.
Please wrap this up.
Yes, thank you. We help the disabled and the elderly live in dignity, we're asking for an increase in pay so we can also live in dignity. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wanna, okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Supervisor Committee reports, do we have any committee reports? Robert? Okay, Supervisor Ullrich? Okay, alright, great. We'll now move on to our consent agenda. This is a roll call. Do we have any items that need to be pulled off the agenda? We know of? Did you have a?
I did.
Okay, we do have one substitution of a Placer County Successor Agency memorandum. Are there anything?
It's page 1, 261 in the agenda.
Okay, okay. Is there anyone from the public that wanted to pull anything off the agenda? Okay, we do have an item, the Colfax item is coming off, or?
That was a regular item.
Regular item, okay, great. Alright.
Second.
Okay, we have motion to second. Roll call vote.
Holmes, Wygant, Ullrich, Montgomery?
Yes.
Duran?
Yes. Great, we will now move, we do have a couple of minutes before we hit our 915 item. We'll go ahead and take item number five, Department Item Administrative Services Telcom, 5A. Jerry, it's all yours.
Well, good morning Chairman Duran, members of the Board. Jerry Gamis, Director of Administrative Services. With me is Dieter Wittenberg, IT Division Manager with Telecommunications Division, also Rui Cunha, Assistant Director of Emergency Services, and Captain Mark Reed with the Sheriff's Office, as well as other members of our public safety community are here with us today. I'm so excited to have so many folks here for this item. Haven't really had this kind of attention in the past, it's just great. The item being presented to your Board today is requesting approval of six action items for the acquisition of the remaining radio infrastructure and subscriber units to fully implement the countywide interoperable radio network project over a period of about 12 to 18 months, utilizing a 0% five-year municipal lease agreement, which is a little bit different than we've ever done for the radio project. But more specifically, the six action items include requesting authorization for the purchasing manager to execute the five-year municipal lease agreement with Motorola, for the acquisition of approximately $4.4 million, $362,487 of digital trunking infrastructure, and approximately $2.4 million in radio subscriber equipment, with the net county cost of $6,802,651 funded by the countywide radio network project budget, radio reserve funds, fire mitigation fees, county mitigation fees, jurisdictional buy-in fees, and user department subscriber fees. Item number two is requesting authorization for the purchasing manager to execute a six-year Motorola Maintenance Service Agreement with a net county cost of $326,660 funded by the Telecommunications Division's annual operating budget. In addition, approval for a technical budget revision in the amount of $130,000 within the appropriate accounts of the countywide interoperable radio network budget is also being requested. An approval of related modifications to the county's master fixed asset list, plus authorization for the purchasing manager to execute all related procurement documents upon approval by County Council on Risk Management, and authorization for the Director of Administrative Services and the purchasing manager to take all other actions necessary to implement the project. As a matter of record, back in February 2003, and the date is correct there, your Board approved the countywide radio strategic plan. This plan was comprised of three phases to implement the radio project, and the strategic plan is approved by your Board. And during the past six years, we focused our efforts on the incremental implementation of Phase Three, with two of the phases now complete. Since the project's inception, radio infrastructure has been deployed by operational priorities, funding availability, and cost sharing opportunities.
Okay.
In an effort to implement the project, and specifically Phase Three, in a fiscally sound manner, in March of 2008, a five-step plan was developed and approved. On average, approximately $1 million per year has been allocated from various funding sources towards the completion of the project. These investments have resulted in significant progress being made towards the completion of the project, with two of the five steps now complete. However, if we were to continue at a similar pace, the project wouldn't be completed for about another seven-plus years. Given the fact that technology changes at a very rapid rate, plus our ongoing need to enhance interoperability opportunities amongst our public safety agencies, and the FCC federal communications requirements to meet mandated public safety frequency spectrum deadlines, county staff explored financing solutions that would allow for the project to be deployed within the next 12 to 18 months by amortizing the payments over a six-year The implementation of Phase Three during one of the worst recessions of our time has not come without its challenges, the first being the magnitude of the project. Initially planning and design efforts identified an estimated $22 million in infrastructure and $4 million in subscriber unit costs. To date, we've invested approximately $12.1 million in infrastructure and approximately $1 million in subscriber equipment costs. The revised project cost, based on the recommendation being presented to your Board today, totals $18.8 million in infrastructure and $3.4 in subscriber equipment costs, resulting in an overall project savings of approximately $3.8 million. Another challenge has been meeting the FCC mandated requirements for migrating public safety spectrum from a wideband to an narrowband solution prior to January 1st, 2013. Many public safety agencies throughout the state elected to meet these requirements, minimum requirements, by converting their radios to a lower-cost analog solution that satisfied those minimum SEC requirements. For many, this decision has resulted in diminished radio coverage areas, and agencies are now investing substantial funding towards additional infrastructure to regain lost radio service coverage within their jurisdictional areas. Because of the cost and magnitude of our project, additional time to fully implement the project was requested. As a result, back in September 2012, we requested and were granted a 24-month extension waiver from the FCC to satisfy our public safety frequency spectrum requirements. However, this waiver expires on December 31st, 2014. Concurrent to any action your Board elects to take today with today's request, efforts to seek a second extension will begin in early August. Currently, only a handful of agencies have obtained waivers from the FCC, and with the exception of Placer County, most of those agencies reside along the US-Mexico border. Certainly, the decrease in federal and state and funding sources have played a significant role in our ability to fully implement the project within the required deadlines. To date, grant funding totals applied towards the project are at $6.5 million, with county and matching funds totaling approximately $5.5 million. Required funding to complete the project as being recommended for approval today is as follows. For P-25 infrastructure, approximately $4.3 million, subscriber equipment, $2.4 million, and site development, to finish up all of our tower sites to be able to support new digital infrastructure, is estimated about $2.3 for a combined total of about $9.1 million. This map here I've shared in the past, and is simply to demonstrate the county's geographical borders, along with how the project's operational needs were designed, we have the West Zone and the lower half of the county, the IAD Corridor, and the Tahoe Basin. In addition, it also represents some of the progress we've made to date with all the green circles being the sites that are up and operational, the dotted green are ready to go for equipment, dotted reds are ready to be developed, and then the solid reds up in the Lake Tahoe Basin will require some additional lease agreements to be executed and some site development to occur. So before I go to the slides with the funding details, I just wanted to mention, as I mentioned earlier, these are the two major requests being made to your Board today. And this slide here is a proposed funding schematic that was developed with the cooperation of the County Executive Office and reviewed by the County's Finance Committee. It lists our debt liability amortized over a six-year period because the first year in this municipal lease agreement is in abeyance, meaning the first payment wouldn't become due until first quarter of fiscal year 2015-16. The amount we are proposing to finance is $6.8 million, which is comprised of Motorola equipment, the P-25 infrastructure equipment, and the subscriber units. This chart also includes the various funding sources by amounts that would be utilized to draw down the debt service. As I mentioned earlier, the radio fund reserves, about $900,000, fire mitigation fees, about $1.6 million, radio project fund, another $1.6 million approximately, department charges, about $1.2 million, county mitigation and jurisdictional buy-in fees, about $1.2 million, and capital project trust, about $225,000. In addition, efforts to identify future grant funding sources, jurisdictional buy-in opportunities and jurisdictional buy-in opportunities from non-county agencies that elected to join the network once it's up and operational will continue. This slide is similar to the previous slide, except it's representing the six-year maintenance agreement. When you look at a five-year municipal lease, we do have equipment that we've invested to date, which is about $12.1 million. So the first payment, which is about $42,000, that would be due in fiscal year 2014-15, is actually to cover the equipment that we purchased to date, and then will true up year after year until the term of the maintenance agreement expires. Other actions being requested include a technical budget revision within the appropriate accounts of the fiscal year 2013-14 countywide radio project budget to support the acquisition of the Beacon Hill Emergency Tower Facility equipment, including a 140-foot radio tower, a communications shelter facility, and an emergency generator. This will provide us with the ability to begin soliciting bids for the construction of the Beacon Hill facility once the appropriate approvals have been obtained. In addition, we're requesting approval to continue with the efforts to revise the existing site lease agreement for the Signal Peak Radio Tower Site. Through this process, we've also identified the estimated cost to complete the remaining site development portions of the project that will be able to support new digital radio infrastructure. This slide represents those slides. Although it's over a period of four years, every effort to streamline the process will be made to shorten that period as much as possible. However, with the majority of the site development to occur in Lake Tahoe, we realize that there's gonna be some challenges there in trying to get the necessary permits and getting the sites built within the very, very short construction window that's impacting the Lake Tahoe region. And before I close, I simply wanted to share some of the features and benefits that will come with the new radio project once it's fully implemented. And I don't need to go through all of these, but what I will say, and perhaps Captain Reed can speak to it a little bit further, is this slide here truly represents the benefits of having a common communication solution countywide. It'll allow us to have that true communication between, not only between our dispatchers and our field units, but also between the field units regardless of who, what agency they belong to. The photo up on the upper left-hand corner demonstrates the Placer County, it's actually an accident that happened here on Highway 49 that I was coming back from a hike and I ended up taking a picture of it because I found it quite amusing. It has the Placer County Fire Department, we have the Park Ranger Service, and to the back there, we have the California Highway Patrol. But what was interesting about this slide is the gentleman that you could barely see there in the yellow shirt was actually not directing traffic, he was actually directing radio traffic. These folks all have disparate radio systems, cannot communicate, so he was actually pointing these officials, public safety officials, around, and he was being a conductor out there. So without an interoperable communication system, this is what it results, you know, people having to use other means for communications. The photo on the lower right-hand side has one of our Placer County sheriffs, doesn't really show it very well there, he does have a radio on his hip, but he's using his cellphone to communicate. And following him is an ICE officer and a Homeland Security Officer relying on a cellular network for communication. So what this radio solution will bring is complete reliability, high level of encryption, high level availability, should your Board approve the action today. So with that, I will open it up for any questions.
Thanks, Jerry, very well stated. Are there any questions from the Board, comments? Any questions from the public? Great, before we take this up, and this is gonna be a roll call vote, oh, there is. Come on up. Please state your name and...
My name is Jonathan Lancaster, and my first question, he mentioned cellphones, and he pointed out cellphones several times, why build another network when there's already an existing network? I've spent close to 40 years in the technology business, and it's a waste of money to go build another network.
I will comment, I know that when I first got on the Board of Supervisors, we were looking for another alternative for public safety purposes, that something that would incorporate both our law enforcement, our fire safety, our emergency services, and I think it's very important that we have that technology in a closed system. Sir, you've had your opportunity to speak. No, you can't, this isn't a hearing. And I think it's very important for the citizens of Placer County that we have that ability to communicate in a closed system, you know, for emergency considerations. So with that, we'll go ahead and take the roll call. Yes?
Jerry, I just wanted to thank you and your team for meeting with me and explaining this in detail yesterday, and I want to thank you for your diligence in putting this thing together. This thing's been going on for 11 years, ever since I've been on the Board, and it's just great to see that we have a path forward, that we can actually complete this project. So thank you to you and your team, and I'll move approval.
Holmes, Wygant, Ullrich, Montgomery?
Yes.
Duran?
Yes. The motion carries? Great. We're now gonna go ahead and move to our 915 item. It's a presentation of a resolution commending our Sheriff Edward Bonner for 40 years of dedicated service to Placer County and the Sheriff's Office. Do we have Sheriff Bonner with us? There he is, alright, okay, great. I am real honored, it's an honor to read this resolution. I am the junior member of the Board of Supervisors, so I'm gonna go ahead and read this, and I'm gonna turn it over to the rest of the Board to make their comments. We'll try not to make it a roast, but I...
I think everybody appreciates that.
I am very honored to read this. You know, some of us attended the 40th celebration for Ed. I learned three things. The first thing was is that at the age of one, Ed took the first selfie in Placer County history. We won't talk about the content because my eyes are still burning. He's a pretty fast guy in his feet, and he looks great with hair. So I'm gonna go ahead and read this. "March 11th, 2014, in the matter of resolution commending Sheriff Edward Bonner for 40 years of dedicated public service to the Placer County Sheriff's Office and the citizens of Placer County. Whereas Edward Bonner grew up in Placer County and graduated with honors from Delora High School in Loomis, California in 1969, and whereas Edward Bonner earned the rank of Eagle Scout in 1965, and also earned a Bronze Palm, which represents five merit badges earned after attaining the rank of Eagle." He's an overachiever. "In 1989, he was awarded the Silver Bear Award for Outstanding Service to Youth by the Golden Empire Council of the Boy Scouts of America. And whereas Edward Bonner was hired by the Placer County Sheriff's Office in 1974 at the age of 22, in his career, he rose through the ranks of attaining Sergeant in 1979, Acting Lieutenant in 1984, was promoted to Captain in 1985, and in 1982, he became the Placer County UnderSheriff. And whereas Edward Bonner was elected Placer County Sheriff in 1994, has served and protected the citizens of Placer County ever since. Running unopposed in 2010, he is now serving in his fifth term as Placer County Sheriff. And whereas Sheriff Bonner is a highly respected member of law enforcement in the state of California, he has served as President of the California State Sheriff's Association in 2008, has served as an executive board member, California State Sheriff's Association from 1998 to present. Whereas Sheriff Bonner has been married to his lovely wife Jean since 1977, and they have raised two sons, Andrew and Matthew, both of whom graduated from Delora High School." Gotta get that Delora High School in there.
It's actually eight, too.
Don't we? And Andrew has followed in his father's law enforcement footsteps, and Matthew is a doctor of physical therapy. And whereas, over his distinguished career, Sheriff Bonner has furthered his education through completion of extensive management and training courses, including Post Command College, Jail Management, Internal Affairs, Advanced Police Management, FBI National Academy, Post Management School, National Sheriff's Institute, Post Executive Development, and FBI Law Enforcement Executive Development Seminar. He is also an instructor in Ethics and Criminal Justice at Sierra Community College in Rockland. Whereas Sheriff Bonner has provided excellent leadership in the office of Sheriff throughout Placer County, in the community and the state of California, and continues to represent and demonstrate his dedication to protecting our citizens and making Placer County a safe place to live and work. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Placer, on behalf of the citizens of Placer County, acknowledge with great appreciation Sheriff Edward Bonner for his 40 years of dedication, commitment, and exceptional service to our county. We look forward to many more years with our Sheriff. Sheriff Ed Bonner." Supervisors, you're up.
I think we should let him speak.
Okay, alright.
I was kinda hoping to go last. My UnderSheriff Devon Bell tried to keep this a surprise. I was fortunate enough to look at your agenda last week. I'm less surprised, but I can't be more appreciative. To get a resolution from this Board particularly means a lot to me. We have been through difficult times, and yet this Board has always unfailingly kept public safety at the forefront. And I can't begin to express how much I appreciate that because it's more than just Board of Supervisors. You are my friends, and I couldn't ask for more. Forty years, my goodness. When we talked about the technology changes, some of the things we've seen are just so dramatic, and they're constantly changing. From radios, I mean, when I was hired on, you had a year before you had to go to the academy, so I worked from February till October before I went into the police academy. They gave me a gun I'd never fired and a baton I'd never swung. From radios, I mean, when I was hired on, you had a year before you had to go to the academy. So I worked from February till October before I went into the police academy. They gave me a gun I'd never fired and a baton I'd never swung, and then they put me in a car with just a great guy, he really was, but he just didn't talk to me. It was his Monday, and he was grumpy. I have been blessed though throughout my career, and I guess to, to just have how that, how that works, kind of some of the components of success. First off, you have a great county. We have a great county. The communities within it, the people, they're just spectacular. And over the years, we've been very fortunate also to have wonderful law enforcement and public safety partners, working with our fire community, our EMS, and the police partners, Highway Patrol, FBI. We, again, I, I think the stars were aligned in such a, such a great way. Over the years, county department heads and fellow electeds, we have just been, again, so fortunate as a county and a group of people to have dedicated, sincere staff working towards the best interest of, of the people of the county. Our, our new CEO, certainly the leadership that he has exhibited, his commitment to the employees, the workforce, I, I do appreciate that very much. And most of all, over the forty years, I have had the privilege of working with incredible professionals within the Sheriff's Department, living in the past. But I want to thank all of them, and particularly the, the ones that are here, that I think they're here for this, I don't know. But I want to thank all of you. Just my heartfelt appreciation, this, this resolution means a lot to me. Thank you.
So my first recollection of meeting was when we were freshmen in high school, and you, not me, set a Pioneer League record for the then four forty-yard dash, in your case, not mine. And here we are, who would have thunk, after all these years, would be here at the county do it. But I was thinking that in forty years from now, almost to the day, you and I are going to be a hundred and two. Almost to the day, and I'm wondering what we're going to be looking like. And what we're going to be doing.
We'll be marvelous.
So I, I just, I think I'm going to leave it at that, but thanks.
A hundred and two will be the new sixty, Robert.
Yeah. We'll, we'll see. But thanks for all years of service. It's been a real kick, Ed. I'm looking forward to the next forty years.
Thank you for friendship, Robert. Appreciate it.
Supervisor Holmes.
Well, first of all, I want to say that if you keep this up, you're going to have to get it longer sleeves.
I've never worn these till now.
But, you know, I'm involved in a lot of county, statewide organizations, particularly CSAC and RCRC, and every sheriff that I've ever met knows you and has such high regard for you. I just wanted to pass that on, and I am very proud of the job you've done for the last forty years, but more importantly, I'm more prouder than the fact that you live in District Three. So congratulations.
Thank you, Chip.
Supervisor Montgomery.
Thank you. I, I actually think that Ed's probably going to look pretty good in forty years because I just found out that he's LEED certified, which I, I don't know, you know, law enforcement, executive development. I'm, I'm not sure if you're gold, silver, or platinum, but I'm, I'm pretty impressed.
Rust.
Sorry, inside development, Jeff. Rust, okay. I, I really wanted to take the opportunity to thank you for your focus and your attention on, on the fifth district, which, you know, we've got a lot of hinterlands here in, in the fifth district, and your commitment to making sure that we've got public safety response up there has been just really impressive to me. I particularly want to thank you for your help in, in getting our community service officer back in the Tahoe area. That's been just a huge, huge help, and I, I know that you were personally involved in making that happen, so thank you. I also want to point out that I was a mere infant forty years ago when Ed came onboard, and he actually, his first day, if I understand correctly, was actually my birthday when I was a mere infant. It was February 11th, but I believe you actually, first patrol was February 12th. Is that correct? Would you mind telling the story of the, the barber?
Willie Slade. Well, just, yeah, very quickly, about 2005, I got a letter from a barber named Willie Slade, who many of us know. Willie was a longtime Newcastle resident. In fact, I think he started in Auburn and had gone to the Auburn City Council, so how can I improve the town of Auburn? And they said, move. Willie moved to Newcastle, and he was quite eccentric, and every four years, Willie would send me a dollar bill for my campaign, and just, you know, little note. And he lives up in Montana now, still alive and kicking. So in 2005, he sends me a thank you note. He says, no money personal for this guy, and I opened it up, and it was just, thanks for checking my business. Sorry I'm late, but man, do I know how to keep stuff or what. And inside was a very small little card that when I was Deputy Sheriff under Bill Scott, we did business checks, and you would, it said that your business has been checked by, you know, William A. Scott's deputies, and you put the date and time, and you signed it. And here was a piece of paper, my handwriting, from February 12th, 1974, with Tony DeCarlo, my partner for the night. It was my first day on the job, and I checked Willie Slade's barber shop, and somehow this thing had come back around to me in 2005. So this is, it was fun.
It's been a long ride, Ed, and let's keep it going.
But thank you for your commitment to, to your district and the county. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Supervisor Euler.
First of all...
Oh, time to go.
First of all, Kirk Euler, damn glad to meet you. Ed and I have a few things in common going back. We're both Cal grads, both Eagle Scouts, but one thing that has always rubbed me a little bit wrong is as a registered Democrat, Ed holds the title of being perhaps the most popular elected official in Placer County. Here we sit as the highest Republican registered county in the state of California, we've got an elected Democrat as our most popular politician.
Declined to state.
Declined to state now, okay. But the story that I want to tell, it was mentioned, it was mentioned earlier that, that his son, Andrew, followed in his footsteps at Deloro. About the time Placer County started doing a high school voter outreach program, where we went out to all the high schools and talked to them about the importance of voting, and, and then we had the opportunity to have a Republican representative, a Democrat representative, other party representatives, and I was there as the Republican representative, and after a class period, a young Andrew Bonner came up to me and showed me his voter registration card where he had selected Republican. And so I immediately picked up my cellphone, dialed up Ed, and the words that came out of his mouth were not part of the scout oath or scout law, but, but, but very expressive of his appreciation for me co-opting his son. Ed, you have had a tremendous impact on this county. I mean, heck, even at Deloro, your name is still on the board. He has the oldest school athletic record listed at Deloro, I believe going back to 1969, when you set that...
Yeah.
That record in the, in the four forty? Huh?
Sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight.
Sixty-nine.
You've, you've had a, a tremendous impact on this county in the forty years that you have provided service, but more importantly, the legacy that you leave with the gentlemen that are assembled in this room here, the team that you've built, that, that will live on beyond you, yet reflect the values that you've brought to your office, the commitment to the community that you represent every day. This county is going to enjoy the benefit of Ed Bonner's service for many years to come.
Thank you. Thanks, Chief Supervisor.
David, do you have something?
I'll just end with this. You know, as, as a son of a LA County Sheriff, retired thirty-two years, a detective sergeant, and I've got brothers, I just have a brother who was promoted to Captain in Washoe. One of the things that I did want to emphasize, this is a great, wonderful opportunity, but Ed, I understand a little bit about the burden that you've carried over the last forty years, and that is a burden for looking out for others. You and your staff have done a tremendous job. I, I can't imagine the decisions that you have to make on a daily basis, but you have carried yourself and your department well in the time that I've known you, and also in the time before I became on this board, and have known about you. And I want to truly thank you and your family for the service that you provide, so.
Thank you so much, and again, this means the world to me, and I apologize for the people that are in the audience for the other items. I hope we now pick up the tailwind, as it were, but, but thank you all very much for this. I greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move to our 920 timed item, County Executive Request for Concurrent of Proposed Conveyance of Colfax Indian Cemetery.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, Holly Heinz and Mother County Executive Office. I'm requesting today that you open the public hearing regarding the proposed conveyance of the cemetery in Colfax, known as the Colfax Indian Cemetery, which would convey the Colfax Cemetery to the UAIC upon approval of your board. Today, we're asking that it be continued to allow more time for the United Auburn Indian Community and the District Board to come to terms and conditions on that conveyance. We think more time will give them the opportunity to strike the right balance in terms of the conditions that would be then approved by your board, consistent with the Health and Safety Code. So today, it's a requested continuance. It's at the option of your board, should you choose to hear any testimony today, but we're asking that it be continued to April 8th at 9:45 a.m. Are there any questions, or do you need additional information?
I'd just like to ask our county council whether there's a preference for delaying the entire process or opening up the hearing today.
It, it would probably be best to have the testimony on the, on the item occur at the time that you have more of the transactional details in front of us.
I will entertain a, a motion in a second to defer this item.
I move that we continue the public hearing in consideration of this item to the April 8th, 2014 meeting at 9:45 a.m. in these chambers.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We're now move to our 940 item, Community Development Resource Agency Planning Temporary Sign Ordinance. Lisa Carnahan.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
I am Lisa Carnahan, Planning Services Division. Let me see if this is even going to work this morning. There we go. One more. I'm not quite sure how to get this to move forward.
Your clickers to your right.
Aha. There it is. Well, this doesn't seem to be wanting to work either. Well, sans the, oh, you got it. Press hard. There we go. Before you today is the Temporary Sign Ordinance, which would temporarily suspend time restrictions for window signs, temporary sales and events signs, and temporarily suspend prohibitions for A-frame signs, inflated or lighter-than-air signs, and portable signs. Proposed ordinance would accomplish the same goals as the ordinance that you previously adopted, ordinance number 5641B, which was originally approved by the board in 2011, and was extended and remained in effect through June 1st of 2013. As with the temporary sign, previous temporary sign ordinance, this proposed sign ordinance would not apply to signs in the Tahoe area, as signage in that area is governed by an adopt, by other adopted county ordinances and requirements. The proposed ordinance is recommended be in effect until January 15th of 2016. Benefits? Well, the proposed ordinance is being requested in order to provide Placer County businesses with the continued ability during this period of economic recovery to potentially draw in larger customer base, while also continuing to limit the number and the size and the location of these signs, and so that there's no public safety or aesthetic impacts. Staff did bring this temporary sign ordinance before the planning commission last month. They voted to recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors. Since preparation of today's report, we did receive one public comment from, and the gentleman, David Wiltsey, in short, he questions the temporary nature of the proposed ordinance and would like to see it go either, you know, not to be temporary, to be permanent, or made to go one way or the other. While the ordinance before the board is temporary in nature for today, if the board desires, staff can review a permanent change in the future. With that, staff recommends that the board find this action as exempt from CEQA pursuant to Section 15061b three of the CEQA guidelines, and pursuant to the findings listed within the staff report, and approve the purported, proposed ordinance to temporarily suspend certain time restrictions and select prohibitions for particular signs and sign materials found in the sign regulations as set forth in 17.54.170 of the zoning ordinance until January 15th of 2016. Please note that there was a typographical error in Section 5 of the proposed ordinance. The effective period should read January 15th of 2016. I believe that has been corrected within your reports, and I can answer any questions you may have.
Supervisor Weigant. Any questions?
Lisa, would you go back to slide three, please?
Uh-huh.
We, we heard this issue a couple of years ago, and at the time, I expressed my concerns about the aesthetic issues and, and the clutter, and indicated, you know, that I had heard some community concerns about it, but did vote at that time to continue. Since that time, I've had just multiple complaints about clutter, about the fact that it really has become sort of visual pollution, a lot of the signs and the alternative signage that people are using. And so, you know, I'm, I'm very concerned about how we monitor this, because I haven't frankly seen us have a good handle on it, and that's more to do, I think, with our code enforcement, and how many folks we've got working in our code enforcement division. The last time this came in front of us, I also indicated that I kind of felt like things were picking back up, and that I would be very hesitant to re-up this, and so I'm just going to let you know that nothing against you or the proposal, but given what I've heard from the public, given the earlier statements that I had made the last time we heard this, I'm not going to be able to support moving forward with this today.
Understood.
Thank you.
Great, and, and my, my comments are that, from what I hear, it's working. I haven't had, received one complaint of visual clutter or anything like that, and quite frankly, I, you know, we see this every year, and I was going to suggest that we kind of look at it from a long-term perspective to see whether or not we can implement this as some type of permanence for, you know, a set number of years instead of, you know, continually bringing this back year after year. So that's my comment. All right. I'll entertain a motion. Any comments from the public? Please come up and state your name and let us know how you feel.
My name is Nancy Hagman, and I concur with Jennifer in the sense that these signs are a public nuisance. They're a visual clutter. I have to deal with it every day, and signs that have been put on a fence that are, have been there for little, literally years, and even though I've requested on numerous occasions for ordinance enforcement, it hasn't happened. So I think, I think it should, instead of suspending these rules, I think they should be stricter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Anna Polianski. I work at a tea shop in Auburn, Gold Rush Emporium and Tea. We have two tent signs outside on the street, and we actually constantly have the public coming to us, asking us to keep the signs updated so they know what's going on, what food we're serving, what events we have going on. I work right above Jerry's signs, and I know from working in a lawyer's office in a bankruptcy firm, previous to this job, how hard the economy was hit, not only from our area, to the Bay Area, to Reno. We serve clients all over. And working in this tea shop, it incredibly increases our customer base, and we actually see a lot of people from out of the area. Actually, probably the majority of our...
and I know from working in a lawyer's office in a bankruptcy firm previous to this job, how hard the economy was hit, not only from our area, to the Bay Area, to Reno. We serve clients all over. And working in this tea shop, it incredibly increases our customer base, and we actually see a lot of people from out of the area. Actually, probably the majority of our walk-ins come from people that are not from the area. So I'm for the signs, and we try to do our best to keep them out of the way of the public, and I'm very concerned about the seniors and making sure that they're safe, but we haven't had any problems. Thanks.
Good morning.
Good morning, Honorable Board. Harriet White of North Auburn. This lady, I think, was from the town of Auburn, the city of Auburn, excuse me. I would like to say that as a former businessperson, I understand the importance of advertising. But when you have ten signs on a chain-linked fence, you can't tell what businesses are there, and the one with the biggest, brightest sign stands out. So should you decide to continue this, which may not be a bad idea, I don't know. I'm not making the decision. Either enforce it or make a rule that only so many signs can be within a certain amount of space. Thank you.
Thank you.
Once again, my name is Jonathan Lancaster, and I'm one of Supervisor Montgomery's constituents. I own a home in Squaw Valley, and please don't Roseville, Lake Tahoe. A sign that's appropriate in Roseville is not an appropriate sign necessarily in Squaw Valley. People come to Squaw Valley, they come to Lake Tahoe for a reason. They don't need to be advertised to typically. Speaking of signs, Supervisor Montgomery's predecessor, Mr. Krantz, put a sign right in front of the Olympic Flames at the corner of Highway 89 and Squaw Valley Road once, and it was part of his reelection campaign. It was right there in front of the Olympic Flames, where people come from all around the world and have since 1960 to have their picture taken. So please don't Roseville, Lake Tahoe.
Mr. Lancaster, this isn't applicable in Lake Tahoe. Just so you know. All right. Anyone else? Go ahead and bring this back to the Board.
If I could just one quick comment.
Of course.
I'm gonna vote for the motion. I am, I've made this plug several times before, but I'll take the opportunity to do again as a release of code enforcement. If we're gonna do these kinds of things, I do wanna hear a presentation as we get into budget workshops related to beefing up our code enforcement for a range of reasons so that we can at least react to these things properly and effectively when we do have violation.
And I would agree that it sounds to me like it's more of an enforcement issue than anything else, so. Okay, so we have a motion in a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Motion carries. We'll go ahead and move on now to our 9:45 item, Community Development Resource Agency Planning, Belcara Subdivision, Third Party Appeal, Request to Continue Appeals Public Hearing to an Open Date.
Good morning, Michael Johnson with the Community Development Resource Agency. Before you is a request for continuance off calendar of a 39-lot subdivision up on the Forest Hill Divide. And this action was considered by the Planning Commission, who approved the project, that approval was appealed to your Board for consideration. The appellant submitted a 2,000-page document that staff is currently going through. Staff is requesting, the appellant has concurred, and the applicant has concurred to continue this off calendar to allow sufficient time to review the documents that have been submitted. Staff's available to respond to any questions.
Any comments from the public on this? Any comments from the Board of Supervisors? I'll entertain a motion in a second for that.
I would move that we continue the public hearing on the appeal to a future date. I think this will also frankly give the developer and the appellant an opportunity to maybe have some conversations and possibly come up with some solutions.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Motion carries. We will defer this matter to a different date, an open date. We'll now move to item number six, page three, Community Development Resource Agency, Community Development Block Grant, 10-STBG-67, or 33, Program Income Waiver Activity Project Completion and Closeout.
Well, I think you handled it for me. I'm Kathy Donovan, Planning Services Division. Staff requests that your Board conduct a public hearing to inform citizens and receive comments regarding the completion of the Sheridan Waterwell Project, the CDBG portion, and the Sheridan Pedestrian Pathway, and also authorize staff to close out the grant in the program income waiver activity.
Great. So I guess we'll go ahead and move into a public hearing. Public hearing is now open. Anyone would like to comment on the completion of the grant project of the Sheridan Waterwell? Going once, going twice, three times, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Okay?
That's all I have. Are there any questions?
Then that's it. Then I guess we'll go ahead and bring this back to the Board for closeout?
We accept staff's recommendation and thank you to staff for the effort on the project.
Great, thank you.
Great, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Any abstention? Thank you, Mrs. Donovan. Motion carries. We'll now move on to item number seven, Facility Services, Placer County Government Center, Costco Wholesale Corporation and Conky Real Estate Development LLC Negotiations. Director Dietrich.
Chairman, Members of the Board, Mary Dietrich, Facility Services. I'm pleased to be here today, seeking your direction on the financial terms for negotiations for an option to ground lease and a ground lease agreement with Costco, and approval of related agreements to facilitate that negotiation. With me today to make this presentation is Lori Morris, the County's Property Manager, Mark Wrightout, our Deputy Director, Michelle Kingsbury, who is now with CEDRA, but was previously with the Department of Facility Services and worked as the project manager on this particular project. Also in the audience is Mike DeBroda, representing Costco Wholesale Corporation, Jim Conky from Conky Real Estate LLC, and certainly interested members of the public and tenants from the Placer County Government Center. There are three actions that are being requested of you today. Those are to approve the proposed key business and financial terms for an option to ground lease and ground lease agreement between the County of Placer and Costco Wholesale Corporation. Second action is to authorize the Director of Facility Services or designee to execute a real estate lease services and property development agreement between the County and Conky Real Estate Development LLC at a cost not to exceed $937,500 in net county cost, and to authorize the Director of Facility Services or designee to execute a site access and negotiating agreement between the County and Costco Wholesale Corporation. And I would just bring to your attention, there were some aerials that were provided, or slides that were provided to you this morning. We've updated the first one because the aerial, I think, that was provided to you was not the most current. So the one up on the Board represents a very current, the most current aerial that we have of the Placer County Government Center. By way of background, I think it's important to, and valuable to briefly look back at the origins of the Government Center and its history, unique history, I think, has a federal, state, and county facility. And it's also interesting, I think, to me to note some of the similarities that we're looking at today that played into the Board of Supervisors' decision dating back to 1971. Going back to its federal roots, the complex was constructed in 1943 during World War II to receive medical casualties from the Pacific Theater. The complex was built in little, little less than one year. It originally comprised 750,000 square feet of building on 220 acres of land. It was a self-contained facility with water treatment facilities, sewer treatment facilities, and was really well-known for its connected corridors that connected one end of the complex to another. This chapter, however, was really short-lived in that after one year, the hospital was declared surplus by the War Assets Administration and was closed in 1945. In June 1946, the center was acquired by the State of California for a mental institution. In that era, in that operation, it ran for 24 years. But in 1971, the State Department of Mental Hygiene announced the closure of the state hospital. As an economic anchor for the Auburn community and the area's largest industrial, industry and employer of more than 1,000 jobs, this announcement triggered a one-and-a-half-year campaign to save the center. The property was offered to the County by the State, and development of the options by the County was an important factor back in 19, in the early 1970s to determine what to do with the complex. At 750,000 square feet and 220 acres, it was quite, quite an asset for the County to take on and really exceeded its needs and abilities to actually maintain it. So the County Board of Supervisors at that time prepared a study, it's called the DeWitt Report, to take a look at the alternatives for acquiring the property. The main options that they considered were to accept the ownership of the property, but not to use it for their own county purposes, but to use it for options for future development. The second option was to use it, or to accept the ownership, use it for capital development, and to solicit occupancy from others to help support the ongoing development of the facility. And the third option was to reject the county, the state's offer of ownership. I think fortunately for all of us, the Board of Supervisors at the time chose alternate two, which was to retain the property and to look forward to developing capital projects on the property and looking for opportunities to operate and maintain the property. At the time, the County Executive, Richard Andrews, made a number of findings about the property, and these are what I think are kind of relevant at this point in juncture, in that it was that the County did not need all of the buildings for its use, that non-county public entities were interested in occupancy, that land and buildings had the potential for uses such as light industry, multiple residencies, or commercial activities, and that the Auburn area would benefit by the development of an employee base generated by private use of the property. As a result, in 1972, the County accepted the deed, which contained a limitation on use of the property for public purposes, but immediately began pursuing legislation to eliminate that restriction so that private uses could occur on the property. The County was successful in that effort, and in 1978, Assembly Bill 1943 was approved by the Governor, which removed the restriction in exchange for a quitclaim deed back to the state of 18 acres, which were subsequently sold for private development. So the county property now comprises approximately 200 acres, and the 18 acres that were sold are those that are east of the Grange Hall, developed at the Heritage Oaks Project. For the last 40 years, the County has maintained an aggressive leasing program to generate revenues for ongoing maintenance and operations, improvement of roads, parking lots, buildings, and common areas at the complex. Additionally, over the last 30 years, the County has fulfilled its initial goals by constructing a significant number of county projects on the property, including the Auburn Jail, the Finance Administration Building, the Community Development Resource Center, and the Auburn Justice Center, as well as numerous smaller projects and renovation projects that house our other occupancies at the center. At this time, however, staff believes that most of the originally constructed buildings have exceeded their useful life, and the cost to upgrade the obsolete buildings no longer meet code and regulations and far exceeds the return from leasing. So turning to the, fast forward to a more current time, in July of 2011, staff presented to your Board an update of the County's Comprehensive Facility Master Plan, which was originally prepared in 1993. And although that particular presentation was, and that document was probably this big, it was laden with all kinds of data and detail about file cabinet storage and great, great detail. We believe that that was not a good path to follow because of the intensity of that effort and that as we programmed buildings moving forward, we revisited all of that data and so found that that wasn't really a productive way to proceed in terms of looking at our capacity and needs out into the future. So the effort in 2011 was a more general approach to look at capacity based on projected populations and building needs. And in doing so, the conclusions that we drew were that there was adequate capacity in the Government Center through at least the year 2035, and in fact, I think there was another analysis going to 2050, to accommodate the county operations. And as well, the evaluation identified that there was additional capacity for current development in the vicinity of Willow Creek and First Street near the Home Depot project. Chairman, Members of the Board, Lori Morris, Property Manager, Facility Services. In November 2011, staff received an unsolicited offer from Conky Real Estate Development LLC to pursue the development of a Costco warehouse store on the 16 acres at the Placer County Government Center. This proposal was considered highly desirable by the County, given that Costco is a very sought-after retailer, well-respected and has a good reputation, highly profitable, well-capitalized, and creditworthy. Costco brings rents, sales tax, and in lieu property taxes to the County. It would bring new jobs, approximately 165 to 170 new jobs to the local economy, and they're recognized for being a good employer, providing a living wage and health benefits to its employees. Therefore, your Board approved the Exclusive Right to Negotiate Agreement with Conky, which would allow Conky the time to perform feasibility studies, negotiate terms for the lease, and investigations of the property to determine whether the property would be viable for a Costco development. During the term of the Exclusive Right to Negotiate, Conky and Costco performed a series of feasibility analysis, met with various staff and entities to determine costs and constraints to locating a Costco warehouse store. And Conky actively negotiated key financial terms with Costco for an option to ground lease and ground lease. Conky also submitted pre-development application in June of 2013 and the initial project application and environmental questionnaire in October 2013. These negotiations have resulted in key business and financial terms that are being presented to your Board today for consideration. Consistent with your Board's direction and policy to negotiate terms which are market-based and consistent with private sector leasing practices, staff recommends the following key business and financial terms to be included in the option to ground lease and the ultimate ground lease with Costco. The first agreement is the option to ground lease, which provides a 30 months with two six-months options to provide time for Costco to perform its, to receive its environmental review approvals and entitlements to construct the Costco project. The ground lease term would be 20 years with three 10-year options to extend. The rent would be $325,000 annually with 10% rent escalations every 10 years. This rent is based on an appraisal that was performed in May 2012, which derived a fee value for the property at $4,880,000 for the unentitled land. This appraiser converted that value into a rental rate, annual rent rate, using a 9% rate of return, yielding an annual rate rent of $440,000 a year. This appraisal was used as the starting point for
This appraisal was used as the starting point for negotiations with Costco. And, and like other private sector transactions, the negotiations took into consideration factors, other factors before agreeing to the rent or reaching the proposed rental rate. For example, a consideration into Costco being a quality tenant and that derives usually a better value to the landowner for a less risk over the term of the lease, the creditworthiness and financial credit capability. Whether or not the tenant is an anchor tenant is important as well in that it will increase demand for the surrounding properties and actually increase the value for those surrounding properties and then the values of the improvements that are being constructed. The current interest rate at the time, rent escalations, and other off-site improvements are also factored in. Therefore, it was concluded that the negotiated rent of three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand was appropriate, which is derived by using a six-point-seven rate of return. This is based on this particular retailer and those, those factors that I described earlier. It's also noted that ground leases are not as common, or much less common, than fee title appraisals and therefore, it's very hard to find comparables for, for the rates of return that's appropriate for this type of transaction. The ground lease rent rate would, rental would commence a year after the ground lease is in effect or upon Costco's opening for business, whichever is earlier. There are rent credits going to Costco for extraordinary costs up to a million dollars and that would be spread out over the first ten years in a hundred-thousand-dollar annual increments. This is similar to the Home Depot transaction where Home Depot received extraordinary cost credits for grading, retaining wall construction, and other off-site improvements that they incurred. Costco's above-and-beyond development costs include removal and relocation of internal utilities, including the main water loop serving the government center, construction of infrastructure due to inadequate water, water pressure in order to meet fire load requirements, encasing the NID canal, constructing retaining walls to address grade differentials and construct roadway improvements. Several of these improvements will provide later benefits to subsequent development for government and commercial purposes. Costco would also receive a rent credit for demolition and environmental remediation costs it incurs when involved with demolishing the existing buildings. The county reserves the right to do this demolition during the option period if it deems that that's appropriate, however. And Costco will pay the county six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars as consideration for the four county occupied buildings that are being impacted by the Costco project as well. And this is not covering the entire cost to reconstruct these facilities for these county departments, however, it's looked as an opportunity to find, to relocate these departments in more, into less, to more appropriate facilities that address their programmatic requirements. The Costco project also impacts many of our private tenants. There are ten private tenants that are longstanding at the government center. They've, they've been tenants for the most of the tenure that Mary described and we understand that this is a great impact to them, this project holds. It's a big change for them and it takes some time to adjust to. So, you know, what we've tried to do is provide advance notice to the tenants as early as last June to notify them of the pending Costco project, to provide some services and supports to them to find relocation or new facilities to move to and try to be very flexible about their lease terms, providing waiver of, of last month's rent if need be and offering them to go into holdover or re-terminate their leases should they need to, should they need to and find some other, other facility. One such occupant is our senior center, the multi-tenant, multipurpose senior center. They've been in the facilities at the government center for over thirty years. They provide an important service to the community, to a vulnerable population out of a very unique facility, which is, includes a hall and two of the former DeWitt barracks or, or hospital wings, I guess you could call it. So, in consideration of that, we were able to negotiate consideration from Costco for up to five-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars to help fund a replacement location for the seniors. We believe that about eight-thousand square feet could accommodate their needs and have identified opportunities for them to lease facilities, which would involve some tenant improvements. So, included in that five-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars is tenant improvements of about, up to two-hundred-thousand dollars. Should the, should we not reach an option to ground lease or the Costco being unable to enter into the ground lease, the county would have to reimburse Costco for those costs. Some of our tenants intend to move as early as the summer or fall and others are talking about relocating in December. There are still some that are waiting for more definitive information on timing and we are committed to providing them updates as to the status of the Costco project and continue to work with them on, on their, what they need to assist in their relocation. Collectively, the fiscal terms of the Costco deal is projected to exceed twenty million, twenty-and-a-half million over twenty years for the initial term. That includes rent, sales tax, and in-lit property taxes. This is net of the costs associated with replacement of the impacted county facilities and the credits for extraordinary costs and offset by the lost rents that we will, that we will, we will have as a result of the Costco project. And the revenues over the fifty-year term is expected to exceed eighty-seven million. Thank you.
The key to continuing these negotiations with Costco to affect the financial terms that Lori has just described is approval of a proposed real estate lease services and development agreement with Mr. Conkey. This development agreement is needed to end Mr. Conkey's intermediary role in negotiations of the ground lease agreements. This structural change in the negotiations will eliminate any delay due to third-party negotiations and potential inconsistencies within, within the terms. When the county entered into its exclusive negotiating agreement with Mr. Conkey back in, in two thousand and eleven, it was anticipated that he would enter into an option to ground lease and ground lease with Costco, who performed the environmental, the environmental and entitlement processes for a Costco warehouse store. Thereafter, Mr. Conkey would lease the bare ground from the county at its unentitled value and sublease the leasehold interest back to Costco. As this project has progressed, Costco's expressed its need to play an active role in the environmental and entitlement processes and in order to manage timelines, expenses, and potential project impacts and mitigations. As a result, the county and Conkey have agreed that it would be most beneficial to the project if his intermediary role in the negotiations and the future ground lease were eliminated. Staff believes that Mr. Conkey has contributed a significant value to the county as a result of his role to date and is due compensation for facilitating the Costco transaction. At his own risk and expense, he has secured Costco's commitment to pursue development at the Placer County Government Center by taking a leadership role to market and foster a relationship with key Costco representatives. He's paid the consideration to the county for the exclusive right to negotiate. He's performed critical due diligence activities that verified the suitability of the site for a Costco warehouse club store. He's addressed development issues including water pressure, building demolition, and relocation. He's negotiated the cost-effective environmental review process with the Environmental Consultant and the Community Development Resource Agency. He's negotiated the business terms for the option and a lease agreement that were presented by Lori and concurred to by Steph. And he's provided valuable assistance by addressing industry and development-related questions as requested by the county. Upon your board's approval of the development agreement, Conkey would be compensated a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for his efforts to date. Additional payments up to seven-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand-five-hundred dollars would be payable and are conditioned upon the achievement of specific performance milestones, including the execution of an option and ground lease between the county and Costco, receipt of entitlements for the project and building permits, ground lease execution, and ultimately store opening. The accomplishment of each one of these milestones brings the county closer to a greater opportunity for certainty towards the ultimate Costco store opening. It realizes the increase in land value as a result of the environmental and approval processes and provides the opportunity, in the event that Costco does not exercise its right to ground lease, that the county could market the land at a higher value for entitled property that would be particularly valuable to a like-type retailer. And if the milestones are not achieved, then Conkey would not receive payment for that milestone or any successive milestones. To facilitate negotiations with Costco, approval of a site access and negotiation agreement, a negotiating agreement is recommended. This agreement will provide assurances for a specific timeline wherein the county and Costco will negotiate on an exclusive basis. That term has been established as four months with one four-month option to extend. And what we would be doing during that period would be to negotiating the terms that Lori has outlined, as well as the whole myriad of terms that would be embodied in a full option to lease agreement and a lease agreement. There is no commitment on your board's part at this point to agree to that. Ultimately, upon completion of those negotiations and satisfaction at, at the staff level and with Costco's representatives, that those documents would be returned to your board for your ultimate review and approval as well as Costco's executive review and approval as well.
Mary, just to clarify that last point. So, so what you're saying in a nutshell, and I know there may be some questions with regards to this. By entering the site access and negotiating agreement, we're not mobilizing the bulldozers or anything like that. We're just agreeing to agree and negotiate, correct?
That's absolutely correct.
All right, go ahead.
That's absolutely correct. And again, it memorializes our commitment to enter into those agreements in a, in a formalized way. The site access and negotiating agreement being considered by your board only authorizes us to negotiate these terms. And as I noted, they will be brought back to you for your final approval. And as such, this action is categorically exempt from CEQA pursuant to Section fifteen-three-oh-six, which is information collection. The approval of the development agreement with Conkey is not considered a project pursuant to CEQA Section fifteen-three-seven-eight-A since the agreement sets forth compensation terms that have no foreseeable impact to the environment. And just for your information, the site access and development agreements have been made available for review through the clerk of the board's office and I think were provided to each one of your board members. In the future, Costco's ability to exercise any ground lease agreement or rights to develop the project are subject to independent environmental review under CEQA and it's anticipated and planned that they would be performing an EIR, which would be processed through the Community Development Resource Agency. Through that process, there'll be ample opportunity for public review and comment on the project assured through that land development process. So, in conclusion, it's staff's recommendation that given the anticipated revenues from rent, sales tax, property tax, as well as the draw for other retail and commercial developments on this second, seven-acre site on Willow Creek Road, that we recommend your board's approval of the development agreement, site access and negotiating terms, and the terms that were presented to your board. And we are available to answer any questions that you may have.
And I think your last point with regards to the environmental review is very pertinent here because I, from what I've heard, there's a misunderstanding exactly when the public process starts and when, you know, what, what's next and will there be an opportunity for the public to comment on the, on the proposed project? So, that's, it's good to hear that those lines of communication and that transparency is going to take place moving forward. I'm going to go to my first comment to Rose Montgomery.
I'm sorry, I actually left my light on from the last side.
Then I'll bring it back to the board for any questions at this time and then we'll open it up to the public. Okay, I know there are probably quite a few folks that want to, that want to speak. I'm going to have you line up in the middle here, please, if you would, because we want to get through this, you know, as expeditiously as we can. And go ahead and please step forward, state your name, your address, and then you can let us know your concern.
Okay, my name is Renee Berg. I'm the facilitator for the Save DeWitt Theater Steering Committee. I currently actually live in Nevada County. I was here for years, but, and I will get back here, but I do not live in Auburn at this point. We would like, as the committee for Save DeWitt Theater, we'd like to see the DeWitt Theater taken off of Costco's site plan before the ground lease terms are even considered by the board. Second, there have been some very misleading statements made by county representatives as to the condition of DeWitt Theater. It is quite interesting that these people have shown us no proof of their claims. We have asked for any reports that have been done on the theater and those requests have been ignored. Third, if the EIR takes eighteen months or however long to complete, what kind of guarantees can the community expect that DeWitt Theater will not be torn down during this process? Music and More Arts Academy's leases, lease, excuse me, expires in November of this year and then will revert to a month-to-month. Can you guarantee that this community cultural asset will not be needlessly torn down before the historical significance is determined through the EIR process? Who knows, there may even be Indian artifacts beneath the DeWitt property or Costco may abandon the project. Why needlessly destroy a community asset? Finally, all of the performances that Music and More put on require three to six months of lead time in order to secure the rights to use the materials for a show at a non-refundable cost of twenty-five-hundred to four-thousand dollars. If Music and More go on a month-to-month lease during the EIR process, how can they plan for future shows? They would lose significant money, their business would go under. Thank you.
Sure, and I would direct you to speak with our Facility Services Director, Ms. Dietrich. Those are very pertinent, valid questions and she could probably give you some insight on those.
Thank you.
Chairman Duran and Members of the Board of Supervisors, good morning. My name is Richard J. Ramirez and I am the interim city manager for the City of Auburn. At the direction of Mayor Powers and the Auburn City Council, the Auburn City Attorney will be sending a letter today to County Council with respect to Item Seven, Costco lease at the DeWitt Center. In summary, the council respectfully disagrees with the finding of staff that the proposed action to approve the SANA is categorically exempt under CEQA. In an attempt to avoid conducting an environmental review, project splitting, or the act of making an actual project smaller in an effort to expedite and rush to action a project, in fact violates the intent and purpose of CEQA. The lease is in fact an essential part of a larger project, a project that will have significant environmental impacts on the City of Auburn and will disrupt cultural resources. The mayor and city council urges the board not to proceed on taking action on an environmental finding that may not be bulletproof with respect to CEQA compliance. Instead, postpone entering into a lease until a proper environmental review can occur, identifying all impacts and potential mitigations. At a minimum, rather than move forward on an action that may be procedurally flawed, allow the board to become more familiar with what the court has said about project splitting by having county staff return with an analysis on the practice. Prudence would urge the board to move slowly now, to move faster later.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'd like to thank the board, and Mr. Holmes in particular, for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Michael Coder. I'm from the Historic DeWitt Theater, Building 315, 11596 D Avenue. I am part of a growing coalition of business professionals, artists, parents, and young people who are attempting to preserve the Historic DeWitt Theater as a cultural and historic resource. The Save the DeWitt Theater is supported by the nonprofit organization Music &amp; More Performing and Visual Arts Incorporated, which was established in 2001 to promote the study, to promote the study and advancement of visual and performing arts and its related history, which fits in quite well with the DeWitt Theater, and is Article 3. We are all concerned that in a report before you, there are no words mentioning any historical or cultural value to DeWitt Center and the vintage buildings to be destroyed. And the entire proposal deals with how much money is to be made by Placer County as a quote "economic driver." As a part, as a part of the Placer County Environmental Impact Report in the March and April of August of 2002, and here's a copy of it, actually, 2002, Archaeological Resources Historical Archaeological Survey, and the DeWitt Center Existing Conditions Report, Administrative Historic Architectural Survey for DeWitt Center, Auburn, Placer County, it was reported that the DeWitt Center property does have a lot of history and appears to be eligible for the National Register of Historic Places under criteria A and C at the national and local levels of significance, and the California Register of Historical Resources under criteria 1 and 3. This report didn't even mention the 1998 archaeological report conducted 50 yards from Richardson Drive that discovered over 2,000 artifacts from the 1870 Gold Rush Period and the house of the gold miner that Bell rode his name for, who owned the 320 acres that DeWitt Center stands on. Yet, a year later, as the proposal before you points out, December 2003, the board at that time certified the DeWitt Government Center Facility Plan EIR, which led to the construction of the Community Development Resource Building, the Auburn Justice Center, and two shelter facilities, and as one of the stated objectives of the project was to remove aged, outdated, potentially hazardous building inventory from the complex and provide for the demolition of the original 1943 vintage buildings. The question becomes, how did DeWitt Center become unhistorical in one year, and why? Again, on March 30th, 2004, a temporary acting state historical preservation officer from the Department of Parks and Recreation made a report for the board regarding the modernization and expansion of the DeWitt Government Center based on his archaeological record search conducted at CSUS and a pedestrian survey of the property where, interestingly enough, he discovered historical Native American Indian motor cup, mortar cup artifacts and recommended further research. And I just discovered this morning that that was also discovered in 2002 as part of that report. And this research was apparently never done. He signed off at the end of his report recommending that DeWitt Center lacks sufficient integrity in materials, workmanship, and feeling associated with its historic period of significance to warrant NRHP designation at a national level of significance. One wonders what happened to any further research on the Indian artifacts. Is there a Native American Indian village or bones under DeWitt Center? Overall, the environmental impact reports are inconsistent in their historical reporting of the land and the theater. In summary, we request the board reconsider the demolition of the DeWitt Center, as well as the chapel, arranging in some way to preserve them for their cultural and historical value to Placer County and the residents of Auburn. A community theater is more than a building. It is a precious cultural resource. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Ray Thompson. I live in Auburn, California. I'm here representing myself, but also I'm a member of the Native Sons of the Golden West. They were founded in 1876, a historical organization on the premise of preservation and restoration of California's history. Today, I will address the preservation of that history. I'm not necessarily representing the Native Sons today. I'm representing myself as a member of the Native Sons. Tonight, we have a meeting, and this will be brought before them for some resolution, whether pro or con, on not so much the building of Costco, but the present footprint that has been proposed. The DeWitt Army Hospital, for Auburn's purposes, was our shining light for our participation in World War II. Any other artifacts left from World War II in the Auburn area, correct me if I'm wrong, I've been searching my brain trying to figure out if there are any left that would be of significant historical value based on the historical value of World War II. Buildings worn out, 70 years old, reached their livelihood, granted, that may be the case, but we can't use that as a premise because we would be tearing down buildings left and right, or destroying historical sites left and right. The Native Sons of the Golden West was instrumental in preserving Sutter's Fort. When Sutter's Fort was preserved and saved for today's generations, it was somewheres in the vicinity of 50 years old at the time the Native Sons got involved with that. The Native Sons got involved with Coloma State Park. At the time they got involved, this was early in the 1900s, Coloma State Park, geez, did it have historical significance? Sure. But it was less than 50, 60, 70 years old at the time. Donner State Park, the Donner Party, Native Sons was instrumental in keeping that piece of property of historical significance. Was it 100 years old? Was it 200 years old? No, it wasn't. It was relatively young by comparison. Here we are, 150 and 60 years later. Thank goodness for the Native Sons for having preserved those things. Now, granted, this hospital didn't play the significance that those other previously mentioned sites did, but for Auburn's particular purposes, it is our shining light. It's what we have from World War II. Saving the theater for the sake of cultural considerations, very important. I brought up, I've been to one of their meetings, and I brought up with this steering committee that if the theater were preserved and nothing else were preserved around it as a buffer zone, you would end up with asphalt and parking lot lights right up next to your setbacks.
You can summarize or...
Summarizer, yes. We need more property. We need the chapel. We need a few of the barracks, possibly the senior center. Costco has already come up with a $500,000 donation to remove the senior center, relocate it, geez, use that money to restore those buildings. A portion of that corner there could become the shining light, could become the historical site for DeWitt Army Hospital and Auburn's participation in that war. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Bart Rude. I reside at 843 Sierra View Circle in Auburn. I'm reflecting on the fact that 56 years ago, when I was about 12 years old, I came before the Board of Supervisors for Placer County, and I have spoken from time to time since then, and that lends itself to transparency in government, and that's what we're talking about today. We're talking about transparency and honesty. And at this point in time, I would have to think that government is for the people, and I have seen, I think, a lack of transparency. I've asked questions, others have asked questions, about the opportunity to learn something about what has been going on in the negotiation process here in Placer County with principals of Costco Corporation. And all we have been told is that, well, these are in negotiations, we cannot speak to them. That seems, if you will, to kind of take away the opportunity for people to have the transparency that we seek in government, and that is a disappointment. It almost as if it's the will of the government rather than the will of the people to carry us forward as we move and see development come into our community. So I would suggest that if the board could slow down just a little bit, it would be absolutely wonderful if its legacy could be something like doing good for our community beyond our lifetime. And that would speak to the preservation of these buildings at DeWitt, and it would speak certainly to the DeWitt Theater, and it would speak to the post chapel. My aunt worked at DeWitt when it was the state, when it was the Army Hospital. She was a personnel director for civilian employees. My grandparents had a dairy near Camp Flint here, and they provided the dairy products for that. So I have a little bit of heritage, although the war was almost over when I was born, I guess it was over. But my history and my care about my community and our community goes way back. So I would ask for a sense of collaboration, if you will, spread amongst the many who are interested. There are a lot of stakeholders. The county is a stakeholder. Certainly, the Costco Corporation is a stakeholder. The principals of the theater are stakeholders. The principals of the post chapel are stakeholders, and there are great many other stakeholders in our community that we can't necessarily illuminate today. But I have seen maps, and it looks as if there would be demolition of the theater for a few parking spots. And I would submit that there is a way that Costco can come out ahead as a winner of support in our community for recognizing what is a cultural heritage and a historic heritage, if you will, with a simple redesign of a parking lot and an incorporation of what we have in our community with DeWitt as we go forward. And I would ask, then, that we slow down the process and allow public input. Thank you very much for your time and for your interest in what we have here.
Hello. I, my name is John Prodiva, and I live in Meadow Vista. I have cerebral, I have cerebral apathy. Due to my condition, I can't do team sports like my sister and most of the other kids my age. However, I can do drama, and to me, tearing down this theater would be a lot like taking away the only kid's sports field in town. Please don't tear down the DeWitt Theater.
Thank you.
My name is Rebecca Fuller. My parents moved to Placer County in 1953 and raised my siblings and I in Placer County. I love Placer County. My husband and I chose to raise our daughters in Auburn for the quality of life here. One of the most important assets of the quality of life in Auburn for us is the Music &amp; More Arts Academy. Our daughters have attended there most of their lives. Our younger daughter started there as a baby in arms. This theater is part of who they are, part of who we are, and it would be such a loss to lose this theater. There must be somewhere else that Costco can be cited in Auburn. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Lisa Lindgren. I actually live on Atwood. It would be that little speck on the right-hand side in the corner. I haven't, I haven't heard any mention of traffic control. As it is now, there is a lot of traffic from the county buildings and other things like that. I grew up in a small town in Bastre, Louisiana, and I brought my kids here for that small-town atmosphere. Everyone that I have met in this town has either grown up or moved here at a very young age. You don't find very many young families in the Auburn area because it's so expensive. We bought a house just this last year, and I can't imagine the average family that may work at Costco can afford that. So I find that a lot of the employees will be coming out of the Auburn area, which is also going to create more traffic on 49. I don't know if you're very familiar with Atwood and 49 Light, but it's not a great idea, that area. So I'm asking you to give my kids the opportunity to have the small-town atmosphere and grow up here without corporate America in Auburn. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name's Amy Bodick, and I am an actor at Music &amp; More Theater. I'm going to be perfectly honest with everybody in this room. I am much like my buddy John here, not in the fact that I can't do sports, but the fact that I've never really belonged anywhere in life. And at Music &amp; More, I belong. I love acting. It's where I decided, yes, I want to go into this crazy business. I want to be an actress, and I have met some of my most wonderful friends there. And I am speaking from the point of view of the actors that go there. It's a wonderful, wonderful place. You really bond, and the Coders are such wonderful people. They provide us with this opportunity. And my father brought up a very good point to me the other day, that this is not just a theater, it's child development. It's keeping kids off the streets. It's a wonderful, wonderful thing for the community and for the children, and I'm speaking for myself and anyone in this room with kids. So thank you for your time. Please do not tear down our wonderful, wonderful little spot of heaven here, here in Auburn.
Thank you.
Good morning again. My name again is Jonathan Lancaster, and all of you should be ashamed of yourselves. The elephant in the room here is, by virtue of Placer County government owning the DeWitt Center, Placer County is a big-box retail developer masquerading as a government. And you have a huge, huge conflict of interest in even being involved in this issue. When I worked in Sun Microsystems in Silicon Valley, we would have called this a brother-in-law deal. Supervisor Euler's brother-in-law was given an exclusive deal to negotiate this. And when I Google his name, I find about a dozen or 20 or 30 businesses at the address where he's doing his real estate and development and what have you. I'd like to know who's going to build Costco. I've got so many questions, I don't even know where to start. But all of you should recuse yourself from this decision completely because there's culture involved here, there are citizens involved. We are not a government of the corporations, by the corporations, for the corporations. I'd remind you, we are a government of the people, by the people, for the people. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may?
Sure.
We also need to be a government of the facts, and just for the record, I have three brothers, so the brother-in-law thing has me a little thrown here. I have, excuse me, sir...
Mr. Lancaster.
I have two sisters-in-law, and the only brother-in-law that I have is by virtue of marriage, my wife's sister's husband, he works for the city of Roseville. So I don't know what you think you're pretending to portray in this audience is fact, but it's complete fiction.
Mr. Lancaster, I'm going to ask that this side conversation stop, okay? And I'm going to ask that the public maintain decorum in this, in this room. Please come forward.
Thanks. That's a tough act to follow. Anyway, my name is Tina Anderson. I'm on, here on behalf of O'Brien Child Development Center, which is one of the tenants of Placer County. All we, we are, we're a daycare center, so we have over 30 children that we provide care for, most of which of our parents are supported by our county. So with that, we were just asking that if this does go through and we have to relocate, if we could maybe get funds to help rebuild our playground, maybe back, or the lease doesn't end until February 2015, so maybe we could get compensated for that. So that's all I'm saying. I welcome Costco. I think we need change. Auburn's a great community. I've been here for over 38 years. I also went to DeWitt Theater to watch movies the first time when I was 10 years old, so I'm for DeWitt staying. I do believe that the theater is important for our community as a monument, but also we do need to move along. Thank you.
My name is Michael Murphy, architect, live in Auburn. Done a lot of buildings around here. Mr. Chairman, fellow... Mr. Chairman, fellow supervisors, thank you for listening. I'm here kind of reporting for the DeWitt Theater. I've helped the steering committee and kind of reviewed the building itself. And it's been alluded that the, the buildings out here are kind of worthless, ready to be torn down, non-reinforced. Well, that's not the truth on a DeWitt Theater. It's a reinforced building, built well, hardly any defects in it. Has a lot longer life left into it. I've looked at worse buildings, like the old Shanghai, Auburn Ale House, the old Auburn Hotel, Tassuta's in Old Town, all unreinforced brick, unreinforced concrete. And they're still standing and we were able to bring them back to life, new life. So in evaluating that building, I don't think it's a negative. I think you're looking at probably a building worth right now as it stands, half million, three-quarter million dollars. So that's an asset for the county. It's about five thousand feet. It's in good shape. And before you just destroy that, I think you ought to be compensated for it. I really do. I think, and I'm not addressing its use, it's a viable building and daily use. It's a very interesting building. Architecturally, it's minor significance. But that building and some of the other areas would make a beautiful heritage park right around it. So all I would ask you to do is make allowances for the building and its little surrounding area. Allocate some parking somewhere else on your site that doesn't have you tear down a half million, three-quarter million dollars' worth of assets just for that building. And destroy a lifestyle of culture and history that has, everybody has become used to enjoying. So I would ask you to, when you're looking at your lease, ask them to keep the theater. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Eleanor Petuski. I'm in Jim Holmes District and I'm from Newcastle. And I've been listening to this. I'm kind of here to represent certainly the senior center, because I am one, and the DeWitt Theater and the Post Chapel. I think all of them should be preserved. I sit here and listen that staff has determined, Conkey LLC has determined, Costco is a quality tenant, Costco gets rent credits, and on and on and on. And I don't support this determination. I think that the senior center is a good tenant. I think that the theater is a good tenant. This piece of Auburn is the heart and soul of the senior community. And the theater supports a lot of great stuff for kids and for adults. But the seniors, you know, kids are vulnerable because you have to help them along. Seniors are vulnerable also. As we get older, we need services, all kinds of services. And I for one have been extremely impressed with the range of services that this senior community provides. Seniors First, it used to have Meals on Wheels. Now it has, I don't know, frozen food or something that's delivered. But they have, they come out and help people, put up, get, they help people who are going through surgery. They have equipment that they loan to people. They have people that come in and help seniors when they need it. Take them to doctor's appointments. They have exercise programs, art programs. They have breakfast, they have, it brings people together. Seniors kind of are out of contact. And this place allows them to have contact with other people and to get the services they need. Play cards, play games, whatever. There's even a barbershop quartet over there. I mean, it just goes on and on and on. And unless you participate, you don't know. I go to a discussion group on Wednesday afternoons to discuss current events. I love it, it's all a bunch of seniors. All I can say is that it is a big mistake to eliminate this. Costco is a big-box store. I like Costco, I shop at Costco. Costco can go anywhere. And I think you're tearing out the heart of community to put in another big box. And I think it's a big, big, big mistake. And I'm very much.
Good morning, my name is Don Mooney. I'm an attorney and I represent Tom Dwell. And I sent a letter to the board and I just want to confirm that the clerk received my letter and the board received my letter. Thank you. I want to concur in, concur in the comments, as my letter indicates, would concur in the comments made by the city of Auburn. This is project splitting, it's piecemealing under CEQA. You are making decisions, especially with the option and ground lease. You are making decisions about the project that will affect your ability and discretion when it comes to alternatives and mitigation. You're making determinations about the term of the lease, the location of the project, the size of the project, the, the, the amount of the lease. All, all matters, the removal of certain buildings, all matters that are approvals, the early approvals of a project. And CEQA clearly requires that environmental review be conducted at the earliest stage. And what you're doing is you're making commitments by the county as to the project. You're making those commitments to Costco through an agreement. And then you're doing the environmental review. And that's putting the cart before the horse. And CEQA clearly does not allow that. There is, there is case law, save Tara case, there's other cases that clearly indicate that you need to do the CEQA prior to the project, prior to approvals of the project. Even if there is just some of the preliminary approvals. Entering into a ground, a ground lease constitutes a preliminary approval of the project. It requires CEQA. And I would urge you to not approve the proposal by staff and conduct the environmental review prior to entering into any kind of lease that would limit your ability with regards to alternatives, mitigation, and environmental review. That includes doing matters such as traffic studies, other types of environmental studies that, that you need to make your decision, that the public needs to make a decision. And one of the key things that's important to remember of what an EIR is. An EIR is an informational document. It's an informational document, not just for the decision-makers, the Board of Supervisors, but it's also an informational document for the public. So the public knows what the potential impacts are, what are potential alternatives, what are feasible alternatives, what are feasible mitigation measures. So all of that information is laid out to the public and to the decision-makers before there is a commitment of resources, before there is a commitment towards moving forward with the project. And what you're doing is you're limiting the environmental review. You're limiting, you're limiting the amount, limiting information to the public and information to yourselves prior to making your decisions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, good. My name is Andreas Hoffman. I'm one of the tenants in the DeWitt Center. I have the bakery bloodlust by Hoffman's for the last thirty-five years in the same place. Due to the Costco project, we now forced to find another location. As you all know, the economy is not that great right now. So it's a big burden on us to find another location, get it ready. You have department, new regulation, everything else. And I want to make you aware that we employ three other families. We have a lot of, other suppliers. And due to this Costco project, we are forced to move out. It's not easy for us just to go in another location. We have to have a location prepared. And as of now, we didn't get any help directly from the county or any offerings, where to go, what to, and how to do it. I hope you consider we employ other members and other families from Auburn and consider that we support the community too. We do nations and then all the stuff we do. Thank you. Sorry, a little nervous, but thank you.
You did well, thank you.
Good morning, I'm Bill Betancourt, Principal at Plaster School for Adults here in Auburn. You're doing hard work. I want to mention that and appreciate that for what you're doing. And I also want to appreciate the comments from the audience. A lot of, a lot of things are being expressed that, I didn't even plan to be here today until I heard about the $530,000 being offered to the senior center. And then I thought, well, hold the bus. A lot of folks have contributed to the success of the seniors, of the DeWitt Center over the years. When I just do a quick calculation and probably not quite as accurate as I'd like to have. But we used to have four classrooms there, currently we have two. Just calculating today's lease fees times four buildings for twenty years, I would say that Plaster School for Adults, Plaster Union High School District has contributed about 1.2 million dollars in rent. And then calculate that over a period of time. It may not have been that much twenty years ago, thirty years ago, but in today's dollars, I would just calculate quickly about 1.2 million. We offer classes for the seniors, senior citizens, some activities there that everyone in the room has expressed value in. Older adults, we used to have a program there with our budget cuts, we've had to reduce that. We're down to two buildings now. We used to have a program for adults with disabilities and a vision-impaired class as well. And things have just reduced over time. And our best years was when we were able to afford the lease that we are in now. With state funding, it's changed significantly for education and for adult ed in particular. And our best days are behind us. We have to look at funding our own building, our own instructional program based on fees. So we've had to increase fees over the years. Everyone in the room, aside from so many things that have been mentioned, the heritage, the history, so many factors. One of the thing I hope you're considering, not just for the senior center, but even the bakery and others, to relocate is going to be a hardship, to find a place. And we're, we're working in good faith, moving ahead, trying to find a place. No matter where we go, we'll probably have to do some improvements to the building. So not only is the senior center worthy of support and remuneration of some kind, I think it would be appreciated. I'm searching for words, I didn't, I didn't script out anything. So this is extemporaneous, I apologize. But every agency there, every, every program, every business will face some hardships in relocation. So I just wanted to bring that forward if it hasn't been mentioned yet or if you hadn't already considered it. And I, and I say that carefully and respectfully because you've thought of a lot of things, more than I can mention. And so I don't want to, in any way disrespect that. But anyway, thank you for your time today.
Thank you. And I'm going to cut off the public comment after this young lady back there.
My name is Roger Perkins and I live in Auburn, North Auburn. First moved here in 1959. So I know a little bit about the history of the, of this DeWitt Center that we're talking about. I was chorus director of the first barbershop quartet chorus group. And we performed there in 1962 when it was a mental hospital. And the people loved it. And since then, a new barbershop chorus started in 1983. One of the founders was Bruce Cosgrove. I think you all know Bruce at the Chamber. And I started directing that chorus thirty years ago. So you know I'm getting old. Anyway, we, we have been using the senior center for our plays for rehearsing for about fifteen years. And the Sweet Out of Line Chorus also meets there. And it was my quartet that practices there Wednesday afternoon. So anyway, my, my chorus has put on shows at the DeWitt Center. And it's been a great facility for us. And my wife and I go to the plays that the, the young people do there. And I just have to say one thing, Neil Diamond said, money talks, but it don't sing and dance and it don't walk.
Morning, my name is Mildred Livingston. I live in North Auburn, a few blocks away, maybe half mile from the Witt Center. And I just wanted to have you all reconsider and put aside the demolition that's happening and to also note that, as a personal note, that I have directed and produced some activities at not only the senior center, but with the theater and brought poignant and educational programs in a play at the DeWitt Theater. And this is something that Auburn needs. In some place, somewhere, there has to be a place. And that's what I love about Auburn, because I have a place here. And I am very active in local politics in the community. So I ask you all to reconsider, think about what we're doing, let's have a plan, let's have a public input. I'm not going to repeat what everyone else has said because you all know how we feel. And I just beg your indulgence and thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Herman Gallegos. I'm an employee of Seniors First in Auburn. I first wanted to say that I think it's great news for the senior center that they've, that you've negotiated some help for them. Unfortunately, there's a lot more tenants at the DeWitt Center than just the senior center. Mine for one and several others that are here. So I'm just asking you today, I, you know, I don't think I'm going to, anybody's going to stand in the way of Costco, but I just wanted you to consider that, you know, that there's other tenants in the DeWitt Center that are, for example, my, my agency is a nonprofit. We serve senior meals and give senior rides. And we're going to have to take some of those funds away from senior services in order to fund our move. And I just want you to consider possibly if there's any more negotiations in the future for funding to assist move, us moving, anybody moving, that you would consider the other tenants of the DeWitt Center also, please. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm going to close off public comment after this young lady speaks.
Hi, my name is Anna Pogansky. I forgot to tell you last time, I do live in Auburn. I am with the Saved Witt Theater, proud of it. I became a student of Music &amp; More Arts Academy at age eleven. I stayed with them until the age of eighteen. And I went to Sierra College, went on to do the music department there. I'll go back a second. At Music &amp; More, I was not able to do my full payment for my lessons. So I bartered for my, my voice lessons. I then took girls choir, acting classes. I was in musicals and showcases. I was an apprentice for miniature musicians. My youngest brother is twenty-one. He is serving in the United States Marine Corps. He served in Afghanistan. He was a student of theirs. Music has made a huge impact in his life and it is great for reducing stress. He took violin through them and started out in miniature musicians. He signed the petition to get the word across to you how important the theater is. I, along with hundreds of thousands of students, have been a part of Music &amp; More Arts Academy and the arts of our community. And I do thank you for your work that you do for us. But we really need this part of Auburn. And it not only affects Auburn, it affects all the communities around us. And I have performed as a musician from all the different things I've done throughout life. The National Anthem for Auburn twice, patriotic music. I've sung at the California State Capitol for four years, missing one year when my brother came back from Afghanistan. I've sung for Congressman of Clintonalk and the Nevada County Chapter of the Republicans. And I've sung for other political parties and businesses and organizations. Music &amp; More Arts Academy has given me huge confidence over the years. I learned to work for them in the arts. I went on to Sierra College. I worked in the music department for numerous college professors. Then I went on to five music programs in the Midwest where I received full scholarship for singing. We toured across the US for those. We did premieres, actually did premieres with Music &amp; More as well. And then I went on to college in Minnesota where I performed in two choirs there. And I toured to Portugal and Spain and toured and represented the United States as a music ambassador. While there, I also noted going on tours and touring buildings that were old and historic. And I remember many of the tour guides saying, ha, ha, you know, you don't have buildings as old as- And I remember many of the tour guides saying, ha, ha, you know, you don't have buildings as old as us and you don't preserve your history as much as us. But we do care about our history here and we want it preserved. I'm lucky to go on a field trip with my nephew later this week to Coloma and talking about how that was mentioned earlier. And I would look forward for our children to be able to go on field trips to the Dewitt Theater, which they actually already do. So thank you so much for thinking about delaying this process and putting in some more resources and research. And we all like Costco. It's not that we don't want it. But we just want to make sure that history's preserved and almost done. But the Dewitt Theater is a Florence Nightingale design, which many people do not know. We had Martin Ramirez, who was an artist who just this last year was conducted into the Library of Congress. He was a supposed mental patient, but they don't think he actually was. But his work is in the Library of Congress. There is numerous history. Bob Hope performed on that stage. I could go on and on. I'm learning a lot. So I just want you to dive into the history, get excited about this area and see why we're so excited about keeping the arts alive. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank all of you for your comments and your passion about this particular item. I'm now going to bring this back to the Board of Supervisors for comments and questions. Supervisor Holmes.
Thanks. I have a couple of comments. First of all, the chapel's been mentioned and I don't think that's part of the, we didn't have any plans with the chapel or?
I apologize for not making that, that clear. The chapel is not part of the project that would be, or any of the buildings that would be affected by the Costco project.
And I would recommend that we don't touch the chapel and perhaps have a, some kind of facility that could have a museum with some of the, you know, the historical significance of the Army Hospital and the, and the mental hospital. I was raised there. I lived right, my, my folks' property went right up against Dewitt Center, so I know the history very well. Traffic, one lady talked about the traffic on Atwood and everything. I know that's going to be a concern, but that's going to be addressed in the traffic study. And that's going to be a monumental task to make sure, assure the traffic study and the traffic flow is, is good. That's going to affect Bell Road, Willow Creek, Atwood certainly, First Avenue. That whole area is going to have to be studied diligently in order to ensure that there is good traffic flow. I wanted to talk about transparency. This issue hasn't been brought up right, you know, in the last six months. This is something that's going on for quite a while. And Supervisor Montgomery and I both have worked with members of the community. We've worked with, I'll start with seniors first. I met with the board president, some of their board members. They're expressed to me that they understood that this was probably going to happen. And they were, they were, they were willing to work with us in order to find another location. I know staff went out and looked at a site. I went with them. We looked at a site over on Loxley Lane. It looks like it's going to work for them. We met with the property manager and he agreed that they would do some tenant improvements. I actually set up a meeting with the board president and with one of their board members to go down and talk to the owner of that building to make sure that everybody was in agreement that this was a viable resource for the seniors first and for the owner of the building. And I think they're working together to make that happen. Senior, the senior center, again Supervisor Montgomery and I have been in countless meetings with community members. We've worked with seniors, the senior center. We actually just, we have a location. And Costco has generously agreed to bring forward $530,000 for tenant improvements and contribute to the rent. I think that that's, again, very generous. I think that's a starting point for a broader multipurpose, multi-generational community center that we should work on. So we've been transparent throughout this whole process, at least for the last 18 months or two years. Some of the businesses, the Ms. O'Brien from the Child Development Center, I know you have problems with your, your, your concern about your playground equipment. I would encourage you to apply to First Five because they do those kinds of grants. So you should be in, in good shape there. But I haven't seen anybody until about the last two or three months from the theater. No one's come to me about theater. No one's come to me about the other businesses over there. And I'm, Supervisor Montgomery and I are both willing to work with, with them. But I haven't seen anybody come forward until the last, maybe within the last month. And so at this late day, date, I don't know what we're going to be able to do. I'm willing to work with them to find another location. And again, that would be a purpose of a multi-generational, multipurpose scene, community center. Where we could have some kind of theater performers group, some type of availability for something like that. So that's all the comments I have right now. And I'd open up to any comments from my colleagues.
Yeah. And along those lines, Jim, when you're talking about a multipurpose facility, you know, outside of this, this employment, I do a lot of work in finance. And I have given some information to my aide Christina Rivera with regards to a federal government loan program through the U.S. Department of Agriculture. And the individual that I work with actually literally wrote the book on finance of this particular loan. So, you know, anybody that wants to talk about the possibilities of, of getting funding under that program, speak to my aide Christina and she'll give you the contact for Greg O'Donnell to talk about that. Now Supervisor Montgomery.
Thank you. And I, I want to begin by echoing some of Supervisor Holmes' comments. It's always a little bit frustrating for me in these public meetings to see so many people come out who I haven't spoken to. And I, I did have the opportunity to either meet with or speak with, I think, six of the people who spoke today. And it was very useful for me and I think it was useful for them to have those conversations. I think it's particularly frustrating for me because there are a few folks in the audience who were at a public meeting that I was at just a couple of weeks ago where I said, the most critical thing you can do if you want to affect the outcome is to have meetings with all the supervisors and meet with them face to face. Now, I can't speak for the other supervisors, but that, that didn't happen. And that's frustrating for me because unless I know that there's a problem, that there's an issue, I can't work to, to help you address it. And it goes for the childcare center, it goes for the bakery. When we don't hear from people, honestly, our expectation is you're satisfied with how the process is going. So it's really incumbent upon people. I see people shaking their heads and I, I totally get that you're not satisfied. But if we don't hear from you, we don't know that. Yeah. And, and, you know, that's incredibly frustrating. I get it. But it's probably equally frustrating for members of this board to see all these new faces and hear these, you know, what, what appear to us to be new issues that are being raised because we haven't heard them until today. It's not a value judgment. It's just sort of how things stand. Just as a little bit of background, my approach to this whole question about Costco coming forward and negotiating the terms has really been based around two things. One is making sure that we maximize benefits to the taxpayers as well as minimizing the impacts. But also the question about, you know, is the county taking advantage of our position as the property owner in negotiating terms to create an unfair competition with private business? So that's really how I've been viewing this process throughout about these last two years. Before I get to my specific concerns about that, one of the things that I did want to mention is that I, I had asked our Facility Services Department and a few other folks earlier, is, you know, is there a way to reconfigure the parking lot so that the theater would stay? I think there is a way to do that. I don't know if Costco would be willing to do that. I don't know if my fellow board members would be willing to do that. But, you know, it is certainly a question that I think is worth asking and considering. Now, my real caveat on that is if that could be achieved, I think it would be incumbent upon the private entity to take over complete management of that building. Do the seismic retrofits, do the upgrades, pay the insurance, pay the liability, do all the management and repair of that building. Because frankly, I don't think it's a legitimate ask to say to the county, please underwrite one private business to the detriment of the others. So just as a little bit of, of background, I do think there's a possibility, but it would really involve Music and More and the folks here in support of Music and More stepping up to, to fill that role. So in terms of the, the, the terms, sorry, used one word in two different fashions there. I, I have done a little bit of research on my own on the ground lease rates. And I, I don't actually agree with staff that what's coming forward is an appropriate market rate. I think it's a little low. It's based on conversations I've had with the vice president at CB Richard Ellis, who has experience in big box stores, including ground leasing some of them. So I'm very concerned about that. I'm very concerned about the, the 10% increase after 10 years. It would go into effect in the 11th year. The term agreement initially would be 20 years. So what that actually could mean is should Costco decide after, you know, we're coming up on the 20 years that they did not want to renew the lease for the extended periods, Costco would have had the opportunity to operate on that location for 20 years with only a 10% increase. And that concerns me. I don't think that's appropriate. And don't get me wrong, I'm actually a huge fan of Costco. I'm a card carrying Costco member, shop there a lot, would love to see them. I'm just not convinced that these terms serve either the county or the taxpayers in the county. So I will say that if, if after continuing negotiations, some of these concerns are resolved and addressed to my satisfaction, I may very well move forward with supporting the facility there and supporting the agreement. But as things stand today, I'm not going to be able to. So thank you.
All right. I am going to make just some, some brief comments. You know, I appreciate, again, I appreciate everything that, that's been said here. I know on a couple of things that were, that were mentioned, you know, government and govern, and people that govern are elected to make decisions. And, you know, there was a comment made with regards to, you know, why there wasn't a whole lot of transparency in the negotiations of this lease. Well, that's kind of a facility of the governmental process. We're now presenting to you those terms of what we realized from those discussions. And that's where you have the opportunity to comment on those. And moving forward, you know, one of the first questions that I did ask of our Facility Services Director, is this the end of the road? Are the bulldozers coming in? Are things coming down? And what was your answer? No? Correct? This is just kind of a starting point for a process that's moving forward that's not going to get completed in six months, but actually take a considerable amount of time to get an EIR done. There's going to be a considerable amount of public input moving forward with regards to the necessary things that are comprised in a, in an EIR. I do share some of the concerns that Supervisor Montgomery has. And a part of that for me is because a lot of the negotiating took place before I ever became on the Board of Supervisors. I have a certain set way of negotiating my things in life. And the agreement as it is, I think we've made a lot of headway. And it is at that point where I think it does pass the smell test for me, at least at this juncture. But that being said, I think there is still a lot of room to have discussions with regards to preserving, what can be done to address and talk about the concerns that we have about this, the theater, which I think are important and are going to be very important for our relationship with Costco moving forward. So that's, that's my concern. So that being said, again, the proof is in the pudding moving forward with the EIR and the site plan and all those other kinds of things. There will be opportunity for the public to weigh in on those concerns as they come out or when the NOP comes out to, to provide commentary on, on what we should look at or should be some of the things that we look at in the notice of preparation. So that being said, I'm going to bring that back to the board for action that may take. Robert?
Just make a couple of comments too.
Sure, go ahead.
For the record, so not long after I came to the board, the board did an exhaustive update of our master facilities plan. Kirk and I sat through that. And in it, just so the public knows, there was a lengthy discussion about how much the Dewitt facility site we would need over the long run and even at buildout in the county. And it identified clearly that there would be surplus properties that we would never need and therefore what should the board do with those properties. So based on some elements that were highlighted here today in our comments, the board directed staff to proceed with using those facilities to the best return for all of the taxpayers of all of the county and not to the benefit of any particular business or group of businesses. We understand and understood from the beginning that, that there would be some inconveniences and dislocations and issues that we would have to weave our way through as we went through that process over time. And sure enough, here we are. But there is an opportunity in front of us for all of the taxpayers that relates to this release. A couple of key premises that the board way back then directed as it related to staff in terms of policy was that we did not want to undercut the market because we thought that would be inappropriate for government. So that our lease should be at market. And if there are arguments to that, I'm concerned about that. And I'm receptive to hearing those arguments as we continue this process. And in addition, if we were going to get into this business of trying to return taxpayers' revenues to them at the highest rate, then we should do it again as a business would and to the benefit of all the taxpayers. So I'm, I'm open to any and all concerns as we move forward. And I'm open to having conversations about the potential of maybe preserving the theater site. Keeping in mind that our, our preeminent goal here is to make sure that we use the resource that we have to the maximum benefit of the taxpayers of Placer County in total. Thanks.
Anyone else? Supervisor Yula? Okay. I'll go ahead and bring this back for any action the board might want to take.
Mr. Chair, thank you. First of all, I want to say that I did write an editorial some three months ago that was in the Auburn Journal. I forgot to mention that. And I, I understand the position of the tenants. I was in business for 29 years. I started my business in 1975, worked 12, 14 hours a day. After about three years, the owner of the property at that time came to me and said, well, sorry, Jim, but we're going to tear your building down. You're going to have to find another location. And so I put a business plan into place and actually I found another location. It wasn't easy. I was, you know, still wet behind the ears, but I put something together. And fortunately, it worked out for me. It wasn't easy, but I was able to succeed. And my business remained for 29 years. So I understand the concern and the angst of having to move a business. But in the long run, I'm going to go ahead and support this. And I'd like to make the motion to approve the key business and financial terms for the option to ground lease and ground lease between the county of Placer and Costco Wholesale Corporation. Two, authorize the director of Facility Services or designate to execute the real estate lease services and property development agreement between the county of Placer and Conkey Real Estate Development at a cost not to exceed $937,500 in net county cost. And three, authorize the director of Facility Services or designate to execute the site access and negotiating agreement between the county and Costco Wholesale Corporation. And I also want to add that this is just the beginning of a step. This will be heard through Planning Department, all of our municipal advisory councils that are affected, and also the Planning Commission.
Second.
And I just want to point out that I want to assure the board that the environmental findings for the specific actions before the board are fully consistent with CECLAS interpreted by both the terror case by the California Supreme Court and by the more recent case, Court of Appeal case, Cedar Fair versus City of Santa Clara.
Great. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Any abstentions? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. We will now move to our item 7B, surplus property sale, former Roseville courthouse. Director Dietrich.
Lori Morris.
And Lori Morris.
Chairman, members of the board, Lori Morris, property manager, Department Facility Services. Here today with questions. Here today with questions, should you have any of your board, is Bill Aiken from the City of Roseville Economic Development Department. Today, the Department Facility Services is requesting your board's approval of the surplus property sale of the former Roseville Courthouse located at 505 Royer Street in Roseville, California to the City of Roseville. And to adopt a resolution, delegate authority to the Director of Facility Services or designee to execute all agreements for the purchase and sell of the courthouse for $540,000 based on the material terms. This building was constructed in 1968 as a part of the Placer County Roseville Civic Center Improvement Authority. And at that time it constructed, the authority constructed the Public Safety Building on Oak Street and the courthouse building on Royer Street. In 2009, after the construction of the Bill Santucci Justice Center, all court functions performed out of this property moved to the center, and since that time, the building's been vacant. The City of Roseville's approached the county with interest to occupy it for a high-tech business incubator program, and the county has proposed to the city that it be purchased versus leased for that operation. In 2013, property manager obtained appraisal on the property that derived a value of $540,000 for the property. Before proceeding with the recommendation to your board, we reviewed whether the property had an ongoing use for the county again and determined that it has no need for the county and is deemed surplus. And therefore, we confirmed the appraisal with an update by Bender Rosenthal. The city has confirmed their interest in acquiring the property and is willing to pay the cost for the appraisal update. To complete this transaction, your board must approve the recommendations necessary to sell the property to the City of Roseville, and I am here with any questions you might have.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? I'll go ahead and bring this back. Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We'll now move to item 7C, PG&E Bear River Property Acquisition and Conservation Easement Transfer. Director Dietrich and Mr. Rideout.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mark Rideout, Facility Services. Very pleased to be here today with this PG&E Bear River item. Been working on it for quite a number of years. There are three separate actions we'd like your board to take today. The first is to approve the acquisition itself of approximately 10 acres adjacent to the Bear River Campground in Colfax, and then to work with Placer Land Trust to convey the conservation easement across that property. There's a budgeted net county cost of $54,000 for this project. The second action is to authorize the Director or designee to execute three separate payments associated with this transaction and to take any other actions necessary to complete the transfer of this property and the grant of the conservation easement. And then finally, to simply add the property the county receives to the master fixed asset list, and so we have that on the county's books. The Bear River Campground is an extremely popular park to the west of Colfax. It's frequented by people who go there and gold pan, just relax with their families. There are a number of campsites, there are some heavily-used group campsites, and it's about 220 acres that we operate there and have for quite a long time. There are multiple used trails that we're going to expand as a result of the proposed transaction. The specific arrangement that we're looking at with the Stewardship Council and PG&E results from the CPUC settlement agreement back in 2003. We've been following this project for about eight years now, and finally in 2011, they formally issued a request for proposals for this property. County staff and parks and property management, working with folks in CERA, came up with a really compelling application which showed that we can use our ownership, our fee ownership of the property, to be competitive applying for grant funding, and then we can also apply for park dedication fees to really improve this property beyond what it was. You know, we had a caretaker on the property, we operated a private water system which were both taken off the site. We had the opportunity to put a bridge crossing over the Pinecroft Canal, which is a piece that's being held out, that's within the FERC boundaries. So, where we had been leasing 15 acres from PG&E since the 70s, we're going to receive 10.12 acres. We're basically leaving behind the piece of property that's to the east of the Bear River Canal because it's inaccessible, and then the Pinecroft Canal is also being excluded. To conclude this, we need to enter into a three-party transaction agreement, and that's with Placer Land Trust, who would be the entity receiving the conservation easement. We've been working with that partner to develop those terms, and then the third party is Placer PG&E. One of the real interesting benefits of this process too is the county will actually receive $35,600 approximately from the Stewardship Council to offset our costs for legal surveying and other things. So, we're deferring a portion of the total $90,000 transaction cost through the recommended actions. So, if your board would, the resolution will delegate authority to the Director to complete the transaction based on the attached material terms. We recommend these actions, and I can answer any questions if you'd like.
Any questions of the board? None? Any questions of the public? Go ahead and bring this back to the board. Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move to item number eight. We need to adjourn as the Placer County Board of Supervisors and convene as the Placer County Public Finance Authority to handle certifications of participation refinancing. Janine?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Janine Windushausen, Placer County Treasurer. You have convened as the Placer County Public Finance Authority to consider a refinancing of outstanding certificates of participation. That is a tri-party structure, which you will take another action on after you reconvene as the Board of Supervisors. So, what I'm going to do is explain the whole thing once right now, and then when you reconvene as the board, we can address the specific actions there. In 1997, the county issued certificates of participation to construct the, what we call the Fab Building, the Administrative and Emergency Services Building, and then they were refinanced in 2006. And then in 2007, the board issued certificates of participation to finance the construction of the South Placer Justice Center. There's an opportunity, given current bond market conditions, to refinance both of those issues into a new bond. The O6s are scheduled to mature in 2024 at an interest rate of approximately 4.4%. The refinancing opportunity would be at a rate of about 2.46, that's what current market projections are, for a gross savings of $944,000 and a net present value savings of $747,000, which equates to a savings rate of about 9%. The O7 certificates are scheduled to mature in 2027 and have a current interest rate of approximately 4.4%. The refinancing opportunity there is at 2.8% for a gross savings of $743,000 and a net present value savings of $626,000, which equates to a savings rate of just over 3% or 3.3%. The gross savings between the two is approximately $1.7 million and a net present value of $1.37 million and a combined savings of just over 5%. The savings are net of all financing costs. Neither of the maturities would be extended past what the current maturity is. There's a couple of key points. We would be moving the financing in this tri-party structure that currently uses the Placer County Public Financing Authority over to our North Lake Tahoe Public Financing Authority due to the fact that the other member of the Public Financing Authority, JPA, was the redevelopment agency, and the successor agency will dissolve prior to the maturity of these bonds, so we won't have to take an action later to move them someplace else upon the dissolution. Another change is that we are changing this from COP to lease revenue bonds. The structure is essentially the same, however, the market is responding more positively when it's issued under the name of a lease revenue financing. We are also changing the collateral. The O6s are collateralized by the Fab Building and the O7s by the South Placer Justice Center. What we're looking to do is have the new issue, which they'll combine into one new issue, be collateralized by the South Placer Justice Center. However, it could be that a couple of maturities of the O7s will, we will not refinance them if it is not feasible at the time of pricing. In other words, at least 3% savings aren't realized, and in that event, we can't double collateralize the remainder of bonds with the new bonds, and so we would need to take actions to then have the Fab collateralize the remainder bonds. Briefly, the county will lease the courthouse to the North Lake Tahoe Public Finance Authority with a single lease payment. The North Lake Tahoe Public Finance Authority will lease it back to the county, and the county will make annual lease payments. Those payments will be assigned to a trustee who is New York Mellon Trust, and then the North Lake Tahoe Public Finance Authority will issue the bond, and the trustee will use the assigned lease payments to make the bond payments. The pricing is scheduled for April 1st, and then the bonds are scheduled to close and be issued on April 15th. At the time of pricing, should the deal not be feasible in terms of at least a 3% savings, then we will not consummate sale. So, we have right up to the time of actual pricing to make a determination because the market is continually moving, and it's also, right now, there are some world events that the bond market seems to be experiencing some volatility on. So, we'll continue to monitor it. We did attempt to do this refinancing last year, in fact, and the market moved away from us, so just as an example of the flexibility that we have and the vigilance that we will maintain. So, the action requested of the Public Finance Authority is to adopt a resolution related to the refunding of all of Placer County's outstanding certificates of participation. Those are the 2006 Administrative and Emergency Services Building refinancing projects which are currently outstanding in the amount of $8,135,000. And all or a portion of the certificates of participation of the O7 South Placer Center courthouse financing projects which are currently outstanding in the amount of $27,35,000. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions. All of the documents have been on file with the board, and the pertinent documents have been included in your packet.
Great. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Doesn't look like it, it's pretty quiet out there. I'll go ahead and bring this back to the board. Oh, we have a motion in a second. We'll go ahead as the Placer County Public Finance Authority. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? None? Okay. So, now we're going to reconvene as the Placer County Board of Supervisors for item number nine, certificates of participation refinancing.
And again, as a part of this tri-party structure, which involves the Financing Authority, the county, and a trustee, the board now needs to take an action on the COP refinancing, and that action specifically is to adopt a resolution related to the refunding of all of the outstanding certificates of participation of the O6 Administrative and Emergency Services Building refinancing project, which are currently outstanding in the amount of $8,135,000. And all or a portion of the county's outstanding certificates of participation, the 2007 South Placer Justice Center courthouse financing projects which are currently outstanding in the amount of $27,35,000.
Great. And any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Nope. I will bring it back to the board.
Second?
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposition? Any abstentions? Motion carries. I'm now going to turn this over to our county council as we embark on our closed session agenda items.
The board will now adjourn to closed session to discuss three items listed on the agenda. The board will meet as the Board of Supervisors for a conference with labor negotiators regarding our current negotiations with PPEO. Then the board will adjourn as the board and convene as the Placer County In-Home Supportive Services Public Authority for labor negotiations with the United Domestic Workers of America. Finally, the board will adjourn as the In-Home Supportive Services Public Authority and reconvene as the board and then adjourn as the board. And reconvene as the, and convene as the Placer County Successor Agency to discuss one item of anticipated litigation.
Thank you, Counselor.
Return from closed session. Meeting as the Board of Supervisors, the board had a conference with its labor negotiators regarding PPEO negotiations, and heard a report and provided direction to its labor negotiation team. After convening as the Placer County In-Home Supportive Services Public Authority, the board heard a report from its labor negotiators and gave direction to its labor negotiation team. And then a meeting as the Placer County Successor Agency for the former redevelopment agency, the board discussed one item of anticipated litigation and gave direction to council. That concludes the closed session report.